All right, fair enough. All right, I'm hitting the record button. We. I'm recording. Yeah, Marlon, you'll have to record as well.
Sure.
All right. And let us know when you're ready.
It's recording. Go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. A regular meeting of the City Planning Board will be held on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020 at 6:30 PM via Zoom, at which time the board shall consider the following items. First, some instructions. If residents are interested, they can go to the city website. Okay, not only for this meeting, but for all the Land Use Board meetings. It's going to be posted on the city's website, which is www.cmvny.com for Zoom instructions. Okay, item number one is the roll call, so I'm going to start with.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will start and I guess we'll start with Commissioner Gleason.
Good evening, everybody. Kaitlin Gleason here.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Thompson.
Evening, Jamal Thompson, present.
Okay. Commissioner Scholio.
Present.
Okay, Commissioner Zamore.
Present.
All right, have I missed anybody else that's on currently?
Helene.
Helene?
Oh, hey, Williams on?
Yeah, she's on.
Oh, yeah, I'll see her. Can you hear us?
Hold on. Hey, Marlon, unmute her, please.
You say mute her or unmute her?
Unmute her. And please make me a co-host, please.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm.
All right.
Make a host. She was unmuted, though.
All right. Commissioner Janko, are you on?
Well, nonetheless, you have a quorum. I'll reach out to her, but you have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and Darryl Selsey, Chair, so we do have a quorum, so please let the minutes reflect that we have a quorum. If we could have a motion for item number two, the approval of the minutes, to table them, please.
Motion to table the minutes?
Yes.
Second?
All right, who, all right. Les, did you, did you make the motion?
You did. So if not, then I will make the motion to table the minutes.
All right.
Caitlin, a second.
Thank you. So we have Commissioners aboard made the motion to table the minutes. Commissioner Gleason seconded. All in favor of tabling the minutes?
Aye.
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 Okay, that is unanimous. So we are going to table the minutes. Item number three, and actually, you know what? Let me, let me back up for a moment. I would like to take this time to, and we did it at the work session, but I really would like to take this time to thank William Long.
Hey, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I guess hold that to the end if you don't mind.
Okay, you got it.
Hold that to the end.
All right. All right, item number, item number, item number three. Administrative action. All administrative actions are type two, ending the secret process. 3.1 Lead Agency Notice, City Council Recommendation. In accordance with Article 11, Section 3 of the zoning code, if any amendment is to be considered by the City Council, it shall be referred for review and report to the Planning Board, the Corporation Council, and any other board, agency, or official of the city which the City Council deems appropriate. One Bradford Road, Section 165.66, Block 2204, Lot 1 and 4. The applicant for One Bradford Road seeks to establish an office building with various associated uses. To do so, the applicant is requesting the City Council rezon the property from RMF 10 Zoning District to LI 7.5 Zoning District. As a result of the rezoning, the applicant will need a variance. The applicant will need site plan approval and certificate of appropriateness approval. Secret determination. This unlisted action is coordinated review. The City Council has declared itself to serve as the lead agency in accordance with SECRE.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, where we left off was your board, planning board, well, let me back up. The City Council asked the Planning Board and ARB for its recommendation as it relates to changing the zone at the One Bradford Road. The ARB made its recommendation, and the Planning Board is in the process of making its recommendation. Planning staff likes to ensure that the planning, that the planning board's recommendation and the ARB's recommendation typically match as it relates to, you know, your perspective purviews, but one formal document that goes, that reflects both boards' views. With that being the case, like I said, the ARB has already made their recommendation. Your board had a couple of concerns. Planning staff addressed those concerns. I emailed that out today. Planning staff also went through, went through those concerns with, with Board Counsel. And so we ironed out any legal issues or legal. Well, two things. We gotta add a couple definitions, Counselor. Couple of definitions the Council wanted to include. But other than that, everything else was included. We prohibited outdoor storage as a use. And what else? We addressed the easement situation. Just so you know, easements do not. The only time easements have allowed tax incentives or a tax break is if someone has agricultural land, or if it's something for forestry, so like somebody who grows Christmas trees. That's the only time they will be able to get a, it has to be significant. That would be the only time that they would get a tax exemption. So there's nothing at the local level that would exempt them from a tax situation. What else? Trying to think of anything else. I think we addressed all of your other comments. Did you have, did the board have a chance to review it?
I did. Unmute yourself to respond.
Yes, there you go. The only comment I had is under prohibited uses, you had no land building or structure shall be used for the following purposes: outdoor storage, bulk storage, palace, forklifts, heavy equipment or machinery. Now, we know that in question was a repair shop for for commercial motor vehicles and machinery as well. I, I'm not talking about, you know, like a commercial van you're going to bring to the office or something like that. But I'm talking about basically large trucks and commercial vehicle like repair. And we, I don't see anywhere where it prohibits that. So basically, the.
Took that out. That's in there. It's, it's in there. I don't have my notes in front of me.
Okay, I'll take your word for it.
I put it in there. I specifically put that in there yesterday that, that the board specifically stated that they did not want the accessory building and the accessory building used for, for repair or anything like that. So that was taken out.
Very good. Thank you.
So with that, are there any other concerns from Board members?
One issue that William and I had discussed was the issue of the conservation easement. And generally, conservation easements are in perpetuity, meaning that this open or green space is kept open and on, 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 in perpetuity. So the code as it's written allows the Planning Board to set a term, whether it's 99 years or whatever it is. So the question I did have was whether the board wishes to have the conservation easement in perpetuity, or would you like the flexibility determination on a case-by-case basis?
Well, I mean, we don't even have, do we even have the, the footprint for the easement?
Well, I mean, the easement, the easement is there in the event that you want an applicant to place an easement on the property during site plan review.
Right, but as it is, in this, in this code, we don't have a particular area eased or, or planned for one.
That's, that's an agreement between the landowner and the city.
Right.
During site plan review. It wouldn't happen. The, all the, all the ordinance says is that if the Planning Board so desire, at some point, whether it's Stagg or anyone else that seeks to occupy that property, the Planning Board has the option and the ability to impose a conservation easement if the Planning Board so desires. That's what the ordinance says.
Right. I, I would imagine that since it's not part of the code, the easement, that he would do it as necessary and for the terms necessary. Because, you know, if, let's say, the county one day purchases the land and wants to, you know, make it part of the park for some reason, and, and, and we want them to have full flexibility of that, of that parcel, I would imagine.
That's correct. And, and that's what the code, that's what the code grants you is the flexibility.
Okay.
That's why, that's the reason why we put it into the code. So you have the, the ability to use it when you, when you feel is necessary as a planning board.
Okay, in, in terms of the, I guess, the, the legalese that, that still need to be, I guess, fine tuned. Do we have an idea of when we should have that, Counselor?
Well, I submitted my comments. As it stands now, and I literally sat with William for the better part of an hour this afternoon. So what he submitted around 4 o'clock.
Okay.
Pretty much it. We might, we might have a tweak, because I think the word perpetuity does appear somewhere there, but other than that, it's, it's fine to be forward to the City Council.
Okay.
The only other thing, if you don't mind, if you're going to make your recommendation tonight, if you would just condition it upon the two definitions that Counsel wanted me to define. That's all. There were two definitions. I can't remember what they were. You remember what they are, Counsel?
I think one was educational institution. I, my suggestion was either define it or omit it. I think the thought was to keep it in the code, so I think educational institutions were allowed in the zoning.
One.
And we wanted to.
And it was another, it was another term that she wanted to define. So if you, if you would just condition your approval upon those two items being defined in the old ordinance, Planning Staff will send your recommendation over. Give me a second, Marlon.
All right, I mean, we, we can do that, but if, if we know what the two were, then that would be helpful.
Yeah. Okay, let me pull it up now. I'll let you know during the course of this meeting.
Thank you.
Well, we can proceed with the agenda as I look it up.
Okay.
Sorry, so.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay, so you want us to come back to 3.3, once that's, once we have the.
Yeah, we can come back to it because Helene is, she's on. For whatever reason, she's not able to be heard. She's on. She can hear everything.
Okay.
And she's suggesting that no trucks. No trucks, that trucks are prohibited from, from using the site. So we'll come back to that so we can have a further conversation. Okay. Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to move on to item 3.2?
Yes. Let's move on to 3.2, the Real Estate Committee Recommendations. According to Section 205 EFNG of the city's charter, the Real Estate Committee requires the Planning Board to provide recommendation regarding whether the subject property is or may be used for municipal purposes as requested in a memo dated October 7th, 2019 from the City Clerk's Office. 425 South 7th Avenue, Section 169.38, Block 3072, Lot 43.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, again, this, this property really should be held in conjunction with the property next to it. For some reason, it was, for lack of a better term, it was illegally subdivided somehow or another. And with that being the case, this, this particular piece of property served as the, the parking for the house next door, which made the house legal. Once these two pieces of property got separated, the house next door became a non-conforming situation. So I will, as staff, I'll have a conversation with the, with the Assessor's Office. And I'm taking from there.
Okay. And I believe that we had discussed speaking with the, the owner of the adjacent property to see whether or not, you know, to give them first right of refusal on that property.
Right, but that's correct. But I want to have a conversation with the, with the Assessor. And I'll bring that to her attention.
Okay.
The other term, I'm sorry.
All right, no, please, go ahead, Counsel, please.
The other term was cultural, cultural center and educational institution. Those were the two terms we wanted to define.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's go. All right, so William, you're going to take care of the 3.2?
Yes.
In terms of the Assessor, okay. So let's go back to 3.1.
Well, Mr. Chair, let's keep going. We'll come back to 3.1, because I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Have some, some concerns, so.
Okay. 3.3 Zoning Board Recommendation. According to Chapter 53, Dash 3 H1 of the city charter, the Planning Board may make recommendation to the zoning board on use, area variance, application regarding the assessment of the arrangement, layout, and design of a proposed use of a single parcel of land. Let's see, Calendar 1753Z, 351 South 1st Avenue, Section 169.31, Block 3127, Lot 24, located in the RMF 6.75 Zoning District. The applicant Cassandra Taylor, represented by Edward D. Amore, architect, seeks to construct a garage in the rear of the house. The applicant does not meet the appropriate setbacks required to construct the driveway and garage. Therefore, area variances are requested. Secret determination. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Chair, continue. I'm sorry.
Secret determination. This action, this is a type-two action in accordance with Title 6 CRR-NY 617 of the New York State Code's Rules and Regulations, thereby ending the secret process.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, typically for recommendations, you don't hear from the, from the applicant nor from the public. With these type of applications, what you usually do, the applicant submits materials, and then the board takes a look at the materials, and then the board makes a recommendation to the zoning board. If the public or the applicant has any concerns or anything that they want to address, the actual public hearing resides with the zoning board. And, and that's where all comments should be addressed. So with that being the case, Mr. Chair, essentially what this application is, is that there is an app, there is piece of property, it's an undersized lot, the applicant seeks to construct a driveway and a garage. Some of the homes on the block, some of the other, the zoning board is asking you, they, they need a variance in order to be able to construct the garage and the driveway. Yeah, so, Mr. 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 Newman, I see that you and some other homeowners have some concerns. I just want to reiterate that again, for this board, it is a recommendation. The zoning board meeting happens, I think, the second, the third week of, the third Tuesday of July. If you have any concerns, comments, questions, that kind of thing, they should be addressed to the, to the zoning board. This board is only making a recommendation, and again, they don't hear from the public, so just letting you know. With that being the case, with that being the case, with some, they want to construct a driveway in the garage and need variances, and the zoning board is asking your board whether or not the construction of the driveway in the garage are going to create an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood. That's the question.
Okay. I, I also believe, Mr. Long, that that there is a family member that has the disability.
That's correct. So part of it is that the, so what, part of the, the request is that there's a, the, one of the family members that lives in the home had a bad car accident is wheelchair, wheelchair bound. And the only way that the person, that the property owner can access the rear yard is through the front door, because it's the only place that's wide enough to accommodate a wheelchair, at which point they can get from the front yard, and if the driveway is constructed, they could roll in, you know, and go to the backyard and use the property from that standpoint. The other aspect is that by having the driveway, the applicant seeks to be able to park so that the person who's wheelchair bound, bound has easy access to get into the house and so forth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long.
Mr. Long, right now, the ramp is in the front. So what's the exact justification for the garage? Just that they don't have one?
They don't have a, they don't have a driveway. They don't have.
They don't have, they don't have a driveway. They don't have a garage. Again, it's an undersized lot. That's, that's, so the justification for it is if you're going to have a driveway, the driveway should lead to something. And it typically leads to a garage.
Right, and I mean, yeah, every house deserves a driveway and a car.
Right. I, I think, I think. Right. I think Commissioner Zamore, you know, the, one of the issues is the fact that if someone parks their car in front of that house, and it doesn't belong to that particular family, they're not able to, you know, maneuver the wheelchair that easily, you know, having to bring it down the street in order for them to gain access. So.
No, I was trying to find another justification besides the fact that this particular homeowner, at this particular time, is down versus future homeowners that may not be. So just trying to find a, a general purpose to be able to apply to future applications of this nature so that, you know, it has, you know, a more blanket, more, you know, general specification in terms of how it could be applied, and the fact that it's a, is it a single family or is it multi-family?
Single family.
Single family home. If they have the room for the driveway, and they have the room for the garage, I don't, I see why they, why every single family or, or home property in Mount Vernon shouldn't have the right to it. Whether, you know, I don't, why would, why didn't they build? Just out of curiosity, why wouldn't they have built something like this when they built the house?
I would say probably because it is an undersized lot, and they probably didn't feel they had the. And so that's sort of.
Wasn't one of our zoning codes that read that, that restricted it? It wasn't one of our restrictions?
No, it wasn't one of our, it was, the zoning code would probably would have restricted it. But here's the thing. A lot of the homes, a lot of the homes in the neighborhood are undersized lots.
Right.
Some of them have driveways that lead to garages, some of them don't. And that's the reason why the zoning board is sort of asking your board, does this change the character of the neighborhood?
That's why I was going to, I was going to bring that up, that several houses on a block have have garages and driveways. So basically, if we, if we do make a recommendation, will that just allow everyone on a block to try to do the same thing? Is that the purpose of this?
Well, if you, you can make the recommendation.
Right.
But again, it's whether or not the zoning board agrees with you, disagrees with you. It's all about the zoning board making its ultimate decision. If the zoning board grants the variance, then yes, they essentially could be setting a precedent for the neighborhood.
Okay, well, this is, well, that was my question. The basis of my question was the fact that if it, if there was a restriction that we have, because it's an undersized lot, and therefore they couldn't have it, that's why they would even need to go to zoning and appeal this. Because if not, it would be as of right that they could do this anyway. So it must be a restriction that we have, why it's not as of right, and why it's even before us now. Right? So is it as of right or is it not?
It's not as of right.
It's not as of right.
And because of what?
Sorry?
Because it.
It's an undersized lot, and because they, they need, they're supposed to have three feet. The driveway is supposed to be three feet from the property line. The garage is supposed to be three feet from all property lines, side yard and the rear yard. Because it's an undersized lot, they don't have the space necessarily to accommodate the three-feet setback.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's what I'm looking for. So I was looking for exactly that. So it doesn't meet the setback requirements, and therefore, that's why they need to go to ZDA.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, got it. And so now, let's ask how it affects the neighboring properties. Is there any adverse effect for the neighboring properties by building? For example, if we allow this, and let's say it was my property that was neighboring, do I want, let's say, this garage, I didn't take a look at the plans recently, but maybe you can tell me. I'm not sure if I have it on me now. But is, I think the architect of record might be on this. Is the house being, I mean, is the garage being built on the property line, or does it at least have the three feet?
It does not have the three feet. It's not, I don't think it's being built on the property line. I think it's less than three feet. But I don't think it's on the property line.
Only driveway needs a variance. The garage meets the setbacks, he says.
I don't remember the, I, again, when I looked at it, I don't remember the garage meeting the setback, but that's what.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something that, that, that zoning can take up in terms of, in terms of that.
Well, that's what I was looking for, because driveway is not that important. It's flat. It's not, it's something that's erected that the garage would be, right? So, so anyway, I'm fine with this.
Right.
Any other board members have comments, concerns?
I know, I know you said some other homes on a block are undersized, but do they, do they have garages and driveways that we can point to to see what, what the look is as far as the, the area, William?
Some of them do, some of them don't. If you had, inside your package, you received a, a Sanborn map, and the Sanborn map basically shows you the surrounding homes. Again, like I said, there's some in the neighborhood that do, and there's some in the neighborhood that do not.
Got you.
Okay. All right, thank you. And any, any commissioner have any further questions?
Good.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
Um. I would also make a recommendation, and you guys could stop me if it's not our purview, but also to maybe address the applicant to address City Council to put a handicap parking space in front of their house so that they don't run into these issues in addition?
I mean, exactly. I did ask the applicant, that actually, I, I actually asked the property owner that question, you know, did they consider that? And he said, yes, they considered that, but the problem is that even if they went to the City Council and asked for a handicap space in front of the house, the person who's wheelchair-bound would not have access to the rear yard. You know, that would be, that was sort of the problem. And so what they wanted to do is create the driveway. So I did ask the question, well, you know what? You could put a, you could put sidewalk in.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying in addition to the driveway, you know, maybe they can also appeal and get handicap parking in front also.
Well, if they did that, anyone with a handicap pass could park there too, no?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, miraculously, a lot of people have those.
All right. I, I would, I would say that from a, from a, from a value perspective, from a real estate perspective, it adds, it adds value to, to the, to that home. And if there are other homeowners in the area that have similar-sized lots, and if they're looking to do something similar, then it would add value also. So if it adds value, you know, to one home, then it adds value to the surrounding neighborhood. So the other homes are going to be increased in value as well. So you know, I think that that's something that, you know, we always look at, you know, most of the times, we're looking at things that could possibly devalue surrounding properties and areas. You know, this actually would have the reverse effect. So. That's all I have to add to that.
Unless everyone on the block gets handicap parking, then there's no off-street parking for anybody else.
Okay, so can we make a, comfortable making recommendation to to zoning?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so I need a motion?
Second.
All right.
What's the motion?
Make the motion.
All right, I will make the motion that um, that we make a, a positive recommendation in terms of uh,
Mr. Chair, if I can just change the wording just slightly.
Yes.
As opposed to making a, a positive recommendation, I think a better way of stating it may be to state that you find that uh, that the creation of driveway and a garage uh, will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Uh, that's exactly it, William, thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion that the driveway and garage will not have an adverse effects on the surrounding homes in the neighborhood.
Yeah, actually, the two houses uh, immediately left and right of it, they have the same, actually, most of the houses on that uh, it's, or immediate left and right have garages in the same situation, uh, all the yellow uh, being shown here. So uh, of character, and uh, and I think, uh, yeah, they should be able to enjoy that.
All right, so there was a motion, was there a second to the motion?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Aye, okay.
I have a question for the architect of record, Mr. DeMore.
Too late.
That uh, I, I, I haven't looked at all the plans, but uh, you, you have provisions there for drainage uh, on the driveway for the impervious surface?
Well, I think, I, I think the way you can handle that, as opposed to asking the applicant and, and I guess establishing a precedent that you, you as a board may not want to set, uh, you can include that in your recommendation, Mr. DeMore, to the uh, zoning board.
Right, because I don't, because I don't necessarily see it on the plan. I said I don't see it on the plan.
So you can make that suggestion to the zoning board.
All right, so you'll add that in, William?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, he has it, uh, four inch PVC drain pipe to the dry well, so he does have it, if you're looking at the plan. Yeah, it's near the word lawn, you see lawn?
Right.
Right to the left of it, right above it, it says four, four inch on center PVC drain pipe to dry well. There's an arrow, it's going into the lawn area, he, he does have uh, drainage in there.
I don't see it, but uh, if you say it's there, then great.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, super, you can withdraw that, Mr. Long.
Okay, no problem.
That was only in one, do you, Frank, do you see it in two areas or just one area?
I see it in uh, right now, I see it in one area.
Well, if that's towards the back, you're saying?
Yeah, it's just past, past the house, there's a, it says pitch onto the patio and right where the driveway meets the patio. Um, I'm figuring he's gonna have a trench drain there. Uh,
It's pitching towards the garage?
No, it's, it's, it's pitching to the left towards the lawn area, the driveway has a slight pitch to it that's gonna pitch into the drain.
Right, okay, well, I mean, that's uh, beginning to the weeds for us, but uh,
Right, but he has it, he has it there.
Okay. No, I'm just saying the driveway looks awfully long and, and I can't see how you could pitch that entire driveway to one uh, drain set, but you know, that's uh,
Well, he has the driveway, if you notice, there's one pitching going, going in, and then if you look at the garage, he has a pitch coming away, and then from the right side, he has it pitching. So it's kind of running to the center and then going over to the lawn, and that's where he's gonna have his uh, his drainage. Right there.
Okay, great, all right, maybe the plan I have doesn't show all that because I can't even see any of it, uh, but maybe you're looking at one that does.
I, I, I have the plan, yeah, I have the actual plan here.
Okay, great, all right, awesome, thank you, that was uh, that was good to know.
I see it as well, so as part of your recommendation, do you wanna say that even though there's more impervious surface, the applicant has taken measures, you know, for drainage and um, pervious pavers, something along those lines?
Yeah, that's drainage mitigation.
Okay.
There's a drainage mitigation plan.
It's noted, um, Mr. Chair, if I may, i- if I may.
Yes, Mr. Long.
I'd like to address the public, I just wanna make sure that the public is aware of the fact, again, that um, if there's anyone from the public who, you know, came out about this application, that this application is again formally in front of the zoning board and the zoning board's meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is July twenty first at six thirty. And uh, anyone from, anyone from the public who is interested in this application can go to the city's website as we get closer to July twenty first and uh, get the actual zoning information so that they can participate in the board meeting. At which point the zoning board will allow the, the public to be heard. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Long. All right, so moving on to uh, three point four.
Uh, Mr. Chair, did you wanna take uh, the special item?
Sure.
Which is um, all right, so there's a walk-on item for tonight that comes from the uh, real estate committee. Um, there is, so there was an application before the city council to, there was a part of the whole um, Mount Vernon West rezoning. And with that being the case, this particular applicant was seeking to purchase some city-owned property. And the city-owned property, the applicant wanted to build, I guess, uh, affordable housing, but the applicant did have a proposal that's in front of the city council. The city council, the s- the city's real estate committee is asking the planning board whether or not these particular properties uh, that would contribute to this overall development ne- are needed for municipal purposes. And I will share my screen and show you where the three properties are, give me a second. Well, and I shouldn't say three properties, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, I believe it's uh, I believe it's six parcels, so it's this property on the corner of Mount Vernon Avenue and McQueston Parkway. These two properties, and my cursor is, and as we scroll down the block. So it'll be, this particular uh, proposal consists of two project sites. One is the three parcel, the three parcels that I just showed you. It does not include WDF's uh, parking lot, which we're passing right now. And it includes one, I think one, definitely one and two, these two properties here as well. It may include this third one, but I definitely know it includes these two. And the question is, does the planning board foresee any municipal use for these particular properties?
Are these privately owned or these are city-owned?
These are city-owned, the city acquired them, if I'm not mistaken, I believe the city acquired them through uh, uh, in REM.
When?
In REM, non-payment of taxes.
Oh. More than one owner or the same owner?
Uh, I don't know, that stuff happened long before my turn with the city. But the, the applicant is the same property owner, so the same property owner wants to build, well, I don't, I, let me rephrase that, they're not the property owner, the same applicant wants to construct one building here in accordance with the Mount Vernon West rezoning and one building at the corner in accordance with the Mount Vernon West rezoning.
How can they build it if they don't even, how can even they apply here if they don't even own the buildings yet?
Well, here's the thing, like I said, they're in front of the city council and their application to the city council is to purchase the property.
What's the process for this, doesn't it go up for, for uh, for uh, a public bid or any?
Doesn't it go to order chair?
That's, that's up to, that is a decision between the city, the city's real estate committee and the city council as to how they wanna dispose of the property. So at some point, they, they, they decided that uh, what they're suggesting is that they, they entered into a MOU, the city council entered into a MOU for the disposition of these particular pieces of property uh, to go into, I guess to give the uh, the applicant the first right of refusal, I guess, to some degree.
All right, so basically, they could arbitrarily choose a process where they pick a friend and uh, give them the property for whatever.
I don't know about that, I, I mean, it was a little more elaborate than that, I mean, so Elaborate than that, because they created a MOU, the, the applicant came in, the applicant was contributing to the MX ones, I mean, uh, to the Mount Vernon West rezoning, and this was sort of where the city council was envisioning uh, this type of project, so that's kind of how that happened, it was a little more elaborate than just uh, being arbitrary.
And, and what's the project?
Again, like I said, the project is to allow for a building that's in accordance, that complies with the Mount Vernon West rezoning at this site and one at the corner.
Yeah, what does that mean, that, that doesn't mean anything to me, William, is it a residential building, is it a commercial building?
It'll be mixed use, mixed use building, it'll be, like I said, it'll conform to the Mount Vernon West code, so it'll be mixed use.
Well, there's a lot of different buildings than the Mount Vernon West code.
Confused, is that what we're being asked, I think we're being asked whether this could be used for municipal use, right, we're not reviewing the application.
I, I understand, so Caitlin, my, my whole point is that uh, I'd like to know, depending on what the city council has in mind for this property in terms of what the agreement they have in the memorandum, memorandum of understanding with this particular uh, uh, developer, uh, so to speak, is uh, because then we could determine, oh yeah, that's, that's something that, you know, we were thinking that would be good for the city to have. Uh, or, you know what, oh, we have too much of that and uh,
A quick question, let me ask a quick question. And I, I'm just jogging my memory, isn't this the area that we had already voted on to uh, make, basically, the, the plans were already made and they can't deviate from the plans if they wanted to build in this area, or is this uh, north or south of that area that we had? That zone that we created?
This is, this is part of the Mount Vernon West zone.
So if a developer would deviate from that plan, they would have to come back to us, if not, if I remember correctly, they're able to build according to the plans that were set forth, is that right, Mr. Chair?
Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, a form-based zoning, basically, is what you're talking about, Caitlin.
Right, right, right.
Right, so, so it basically is a type of building that could build within that, if, if, so if they have one of those forms and they could go right ahead and kinda have a, 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 a express path to getting uh, all their purpose and all their uh, uh, requirements in. What I'm asking is, if, what's before us right now, as you uh, uh, said before is, what could we use here as a city? Uh, or, you, you know, what, how could the property be developed for, for uh, city or public use?
But, okay.
The issue here is that without having a comprehensive plan. Okay, without having a comprehensive plan in terms of knowing what, eh, what we, what we have in the entire zone, this becomes again, very haphazard development, so by the time everyone, like, builds whatever they want in all these little parcels, we end up with the plan for the area, so where's the plan for the open space, where's the plan for the park, where's the plan for, for public uh, things? Where's the plan for maybe uh, some uh, shopping or, or some uh, light uh, commercial, uh, you know, whatever, where's all that, I don't, I don't see it.
So, so again, for, take the fact, take the fact that the applicant is proposing, the, whatever the applicant's proposing in front of the city council, because that's the city council's purpose. The question is really in front of you, and you're asking about it from a comprehensive standpoint, uh, comprehensive standpoint, Mr. DeMore. The question is in front of you, is within the Mount Vernon West area, can this be used for municipal purposes?
Yes, a fair park.
Okay, so then that's your recommendation, that's, that's, if that's what you
But, but I have a question, hold on. Like, when, when this type of form, uh, zone was created, was there, in there, anything for municipal purposes when it was approved? I don't recall. Does any, can anybody help me out here, because I, 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 I'm trying to understand where Leslie's coming from, but I understand that you're trying to make a recommendation of whether this could be used for a municipal purpose. So municipal purpose meaning park, right, what are, what are the choices, park, city, city uh, agency? Use for any of this?
Right, it could be a pa- it could be parking, anything that's, that the city of Mount Vernon finds to, you know, could use it for uh, it, basically, is there any reason for the city of Mount Vernon to retain, holding on to this piece of property, that's really
And I submit yes, and the reason I'm submitting yes is that we don't have a damn comprehensive plan that could give us a better idea or a bigger vision as to what this whole area could be, so everyone could just keep on coming and building type of building or this type of uses in the zones, I'll keep building of mixed use, uh, mixed use, mixed use, mixed use, mixed use. So now by the time it's all done, all we have is a bunch of rows of mixed use with no type of public amenities.
So here's where we made this
Decision without knowing what's going on in the entire area, because we don't have a plan for the entire area. These are the type of buildings you could put in the entire area, but we don't have a plan, and, and this is this is what keeps on happening in Mount Vernon, and I think it's by design. I honestly do, because if it's not by design, why don't we have a comprehensive plan in this city already? So no one could tell me after nine years of being on the planning board, and it was only in my first year when I got here under uh, Jeff Williams, that we really had a serious conversation, this thing was being pushed forward.
But, but William, I mean Leslie, 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 I would say that um, I, I agree with, with some of what you're saying, but um, some of it I, I disagree with because the city council hired a planner and a land use attorney to help with the, with the comprehensive plan, um, as well as planning throughout the city. Now, we know that they did not um, uh, get paid, so they stopped working on these things. So what I would say is they were involved with the Mount Vernon West plan. Pat Cleary was involved with this, is that correct, Mr. Long?
That's correct, he helped write it, yes.
Right, and it's familiar with the uh, this particular application, which is twenty-nine North McQueston, twenty-five North McQueston, seven dash eleven North McQueston Parkway, so this is something that had been worked on with Pat Cleary, um, and with the council. And you've gotta start someplace, you've gotta start, we can't, I mean, we don't have the plan yet, you know, we, we were doing everything that we possibly could in order to have professionals come in to assist the city with this plan, right now, they're not being paid. So we have to figure out a way in which, you know, we can kinda do a workaround so that they can get back on board. We're not gonna be able to complete the comprehensive plan until we have, you know, pro- professionals coming back in to assist the city council with, with moving it forward, we could only do so much ourselves.
I understand you, Mr. Chair, so that, let's not shoot ourselves in the foot right now and just go ahead and just, all right, well, since we don't have that, let's just go ahead and approve all these things or let these things go through and let people do whatever they want. And then later on down the road, I don't know, maybe when we get a new controller that will actually pay the bills, whatever it may be, uh, and then we start from there.
No, I, I, I I agree with you, but what I'm saying is that the planner that is helping us or was helping us in terms of the comprehensive plan was involved with the Mount Vernon West plan, and this particular, you know, uh, I guess, application that is, is going to be going before the council. So it's not like somebody coming in and just saying, oh, hey, you know what, you can do this in this zone, and we just wanna build something.
So it would be nice if we could see that, if, if we had some input and not just somebody from the outside, it's like, oh yeah, you hired me from the outside, so I'm gonna take care of it all behind the, the drapes and the, and the, you know, small mirrors, then I, but it's good for you, don't worry about it. How come we don't see it?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may,
Yes.
Why don't we get a chance to look at it, let's see how far this planner got for the vision in that area before we make a decision, I think Leslie would feel better about seeing something or some type of vision for that area before we go and say, no, we don't need it.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Nistrelio, the Mount Vernon, the Mount Vernon West uh, you know, uh, uh, base zoning, form-based zoning that was approved, I mean, that was, I mean, that was, all this has pretty much been taken into consideration before. So, uh, Mr. Long, can you comment on that, because it seems like we're gonna, we're digressing a bit here.
Yeah, so uh, so it, it essentially, when the, when the Mount Vernon West rezoning code was adopted, it is essentially serving as the plan for the area. Um, I'm trying to think of how to best it, you know, I, I, I think, I, I, so it, it serves as the plan. Now, I, I, to address board members of Moore's concerns, if he feels, and again, he's one of, you know, one opinion, but if he feels that it can be used for municipal purposes, But if he feels that it can be used for municipal purposes, then you know, you can include that in your recommendation. Your recommendation can go back and say, you know what? We think that you should consider, as opposed to saying that, I think the best way to handle this is give the city council and the real estate committee some things to think about. Yes, you should consider this for municipal purposes, for parking, for a park, that kind of thing. Give them some considerations to think about, as opposed to coming out at as a right saying, yes, we think you should, this is not needed for municipal purposes. Or no, it's not, or no, it is needed for municipal purposes.
Again, this is probably the only town that I know of that's so dysfunctional. That can't put a comprehensive plan together after all these years. I understand, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the recent developments in terms of the planner is not getting paid. But still, uh, that we would go ahead and and make any type of recommendation without knowing what the entire zone looks like. The only thing that that's in the zone right now is here's the type of buildings you could build in this zone. That's it. But it doesn't allow for, okay, well, we think, uh, you know, uh, maybe there should be uh X amount of linear feet of, let's say, housing, then there should be a break, there should be some to open space. Maybe there should be some type of pavilion area, uh, you know, with a gazebo and it's.
Already identified.
Like that has been planned.
Didn't make that your recommendation.
Right, so we can make that recommendation, but you know what? Honestly? I think it's going to fall on deaf ears because it always has. And and for the nine years I've been here, that's exactly what keeps happening. And while we'll make the recommendation, but you know, just like we got that ugly building on the question parkway with a that looks like a Lego block or whatever it is, okay? Uh, you know, I was, you know, I I I said everything. I jumped, I screamed, and you know, the lady came in off. I can't get my building the way I want, the color of the bottom of my shoes or whatever. I don't want to come about do any business here. Then don't. We keep pandering to these people and and everyone who jumps up, I don't even get it anymore. Honestly, I'm going to abstain. I'm actually kind of disgusted, honestly.
When the form was created, wasn't there different areas identified for open space? And.
No. No.
I don't recall it like that.
Okay, well, then let's table this until we can all recall.
Mr. Long, can you speak on that at all in terms of uh open space?
I mean, I I'm gonna uh. Again, the the best way I can explain it is that under the way things happen traditionally. Is that, yes, you would, Mr. Zamora is correct to some degree, you would create a plan that outlines what you want to do for the entire area. That could either sit in a plan, a neighborhood plan for itself, or it could sit inside of a comprehensive plan. The city of Mount Vernon, for whatever reason, we did not go in that direction. What we did was we went and we created zoning around the area. The zoning does sort of set the plan for the area because zoning is an implementation strategy of. Whatever it is that you want to see happen.
Incorporate this particular zone into the comprehensive plan. That was my understanding when we voted for it.
Yes, I say, yes, the the implementation of this will fold into the comprehensive plan, absolutely, because again. The zoning is implementation. It serves as sort of the plan. Mr. Zamora's point is that, you know, we didn't get to the point of uh. Really defining where park space, municipal park space should happen, uh where parking should happen. Uh, we didn't get to that point and um. You know, again, so my my suggestion to you. Is rather than say yes or no about its need for municipal purposes. Absent having the plan is to send them some considerations that you as a planning board think that they should consider.
I agree with that.
Okay, all right, that that's fair. And this is not something that has to be decided today, okay? So we can, we can discuss in terms and come up with certain things in terms of a recommendation that can encompass open space and some other things also. We can be creative. And think about some things that actually, you know, would really work there. So.
Yeah, the crazy thing is that uh this is really so simple. I gotta tell you, one week in my office. Okay, one week with a team of people at my office, I could plan that entire area and propose something. And get it in front of, let's say, all the land use boards, at least for us to start a conversation. How come something in a city like this of our size, that we can't come up in nine years I've been here, we can't come up with something so simple? For such an important neighborhood?
Because it's not that simple. If it were that simple, it would have been done. It's not that simple.
Oh, you know, it's not, it's 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 not that simple simply because we're not all the same page.
But then I don't understand why we would approve a form like this. I. Hey, Commissioners of More, hold on a minute. My question is. What we're supposed to be doing tonight is making a recommendation of whether this could be used for municipal purposes or not. So without seeing what the plan is.
And it it doesn't have to be. This is not something that has to be today, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, I understand, but. I don't understand why why we we would bother approving a form if we weren't, I don't know.
Okay, ask the question, please.
Well, Commissioner, did you approve that form?
I'm sorry?
Were you part of the people? You see, you didn't approve that form because that form was approved by the city council. It had nothing.
City council, but it came to us.
Yes, it came to us, and guess what? And my recommendation was no. So if your recommendation was yes, and that's your recollection, then that's different. My recommendation was for this particular reason. And now here it is. Here we are again. Look, you know what? So.
I know what municipal use you think could be used on that property. I'm open to listening. I just.
Well, it again, it has nothing to do with this particular property. It has to do with the entire neighborhood.
I know, but we're talking, we're talking about these properties right now. I can't. So I'm trying to understand your perspective because. Can it be used for municipal purposes or not? Is am I incorrect in what what's being asked?
Well, I'll simplify it for you. The answer is yes, in my per in my view, yes.
Yes, it could be used for municipal purposes.
Correct.
So can you, can you please explain to me where you think that fits? Like. You know, more specific.
Just simplify it again. I think there should be a park there, and this is oversimplification, but I think there should be a park there.
In that whole area.
In that whole area. Because we lack, we have never identified where open space should be or where public space should be, where public parking should be. We have it, how how? How people will circulate in that area. If we're planning a neighborhood, how do you plan a neighborhood by uh every lot saying, oh, yes, yes, uh, yeah, uh, uh. The the building, the type of building that is allowing the zone, yeah, you could build it there. Go ahead. Because at the end of the day, when it's all done, if there are no more parcels left, we will not have a neighborhood. We'll have a wall of buildings. With no open space, no public space, no circulation space, and it'll eventually end up why people don't move to Mount Vernon.
So then again, make that your recommendation. Make that your recommendation. Can I, can I also add what you, Commissioner Gleason?
I just want to say one thing. Can a recommendation be made for ten twenty-five percent of the area be used for open space?
Of course they recommend, yes.
Commissioner Gleason, my point here is that we should not move forward with any more development of this area. Until we can properly plan for this neighborhood. Because if we don't, eh eh, okay, ten percent, twenty-five percent, what does that do? I don't even know what it means. This is the thing. We do not know what it means. We don't, we can't know what it means until you plan. This is what I do for for a living. I plan. You cannot, you cannot. Keep building without a plan. And that's what we're doing in this neighborhood. That's why we're doing the Third Street Corridor. That's why we're doing everywhere, because that's all we know how to do. Because we're very dysfunctional. And that's how we operate. Now, it could be by design, just so that individual parties get what they want. I'm tired of it. Tell you the truth, I don't even know what I'm sitting here wasting my time for. Uh uh up to approve parking lots or I mean driveways and buildings. I I really couldn't care. Honestly, what I care about is the overall picture, the overall uh vision of this entire city. I suffered through the individual lot issues that we have, looking for the bigger picture, but every time it comes to the bigger picture, boom! We want to scrap it and just keep going and haphazardly develop. So we do every time. We want to do a a beautiful setting in the park and create some public space. Now we got some, you know, developer who wants to, you know, put a uh. The construction yard there. So we end up with nine years I've been here. This is all. And you know, I didn't, I didn't see this coming. Honestly, I did not see this reaction coming from me today. But this, this got me there. Because it's like the same movie over and over again. Only in Mount Vernon, the same movie over and over again.
Well, maybe the recommendation. You could mention that you're leaning towards the city. Retaining it. Park and open spaces. And I'm taking a look at the Mount Vernon West code now and under pr- planning principles. It seems that in addition to what type of buildings, what form of buildings, it's meant to be pedestrian and bike friendly. And a range of open space, including parks, squares, plazas, playgrounds, should be distributed throughout the area. So part of your recommendation could be. The city like to see open space in that area. We'd like to also see what the developer has in mind to maximize. Open space in its plans, and then you'd be in a better position to.
Eh, but.
Up or down.
Yeah, but with all due respect, I I don't know that you want to. As staff, I would not, and I understand you want to see the proposed, the the applicant's proposal. I don't know if you're at the, I don't. I don't know. Again, this is just me. I don't know if you would want to see that. I mean, and here's the reason why I say that. Forget, forget what the applicant may or may not be proposing. The question is, again, and I think you answered it, that, excuse me, board member Zamora. Is that you feel that it could be used for municipal purposes from the standpoint of, you know, we need open space in the area, we need parking. I don't think seeing what the applicant, what difference does it make whether the applicant's proposing you here across the street or anywhere else? If you feel that there's some municipal purposes that are needed for the neighborhood.
Right. I think I think one way of of kind of summarizing this is that. You know, in terms of when when we do make a a recommendation, you know, to the city council, you know, we can talk about the fact that, you know, uh. Having a lack of a comprehensive plan, um having a a lack of a of a complete understanding of what is going in this zone. Um where the open space would be, how developers going are are going to um be developing, you know, um. You know, how many units are we talking about? Um, uh, you know. And and again, to your to your point, Commissioners of More, you know. The plan for that for that area, not just, you know, a building, you know, a mixed use building, you know, how are we planning a community? What are we doing in to, you know, to attract um uh uh families to come here um and live and be part of a community? Um, so that's the recommendation that that we can make to city council that, you know, when we have parcels that are owned by the city. That are um. Uh in areas in which we, you know, do have uh some type of a plan. That these are the things that have to strongly be considered. And for us to make a recommendation, um. We need to have more information. We need to have a better understanding because, again, we want all of Mount Vernon. You know, to uh. Be a community, be 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 neighborhoods, be be friendly, be be walkable, you know, you know, where where. Other communities do the same thing, you know, where you can get out, where you can get, especially look at COVID nineteen right now. Looking to to go out, you know, to go for a walk, you know, to be able to, you know. You know, just kind of get your get your head straight. Um, we don't, we don't, we don't have those those facilities that other communities do. So, you know, it's important that we do have. Open space, and this is something a recommendation that we can make to them, that it's something that we really need to um. You know, do a dig or dive and a bigger dive and figure out. How we're going to make this happen. And I mean, that's, that's really all I can really think of.
Well, well, you you said it one percent correct, Commissioner. And the thing is, as the our 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 council has said, you know, parks, bike lanes, all this stuff, where is it? Who's thinking about it? And if we're not thinking about it, city council's not thinking about it. If it's not, you know, Tony Robbins always says. If you don't plan for it, it's not gonna happen. If you don't plan for it, it's never gonna happen. We don't have a plan for it. Therefore, it will never happen. Has anyone even ever considered, let's say, for example, the question parkway, I believe right now it has one lane of parking and then a northbound and southbound lane. How about we stop the parking on the question parkway? Because who really parks on the question, right? Everyone has a driveway or some type of lot there anyway. In that area along the train track I'm talking about, right before the split where it goes in uh where it goes uh into the plaza space. And let's, in that one lane, uh a parking can turn into, let's, we would move it against the railroad track side. Would be our bike lane and and walk lane, almost like, you know, Hudson River Park, uh going down the West Side Highway. Because no one really needs to park there. But have we even considered that? These are the types of things that a comprehensive plan would do. We'd sit down, everyone sit down, and we'd do different iterations until we have this neighborhood plan. Then, yes, developer, this building's available. Yes, we'd love to see an apartment building that would mix you. You, what do you want to do? Oh, a parking lot, fantastic. We we, that's exactly where we envisioned it. Supermarket here, pavilion here, whatever it is. We have a plan for it. Then if anyone who wants to fit a piece of that puzzle, come on in. We're good. But right now, we're just saying, oh, there's a puppy available. What do you want to do? Oh, I don't know, John, let's do that. Sure. No.
You have to have a master plan. He's he's a hundred percent correct. If not, you just throw in dice in the air and wherever they land, they land. You have to have a plan. You got to plan to work and work to plan. That's the bottom line.
So then I I think that's, if if the board feels that's the recommendation, I I think, you know. If you want to send more than one recommendation, you can do that as well, but I if that's, I think you should send that to the city council and tell them that.
It's not that hard to get a master plan.
Right.
So what we've been asking for for years, for years, just, we need a plan. If we can't do it for the whole city, at least before we develop an area, let's try to just focus on that area. It's not that difficult.
Well, I think that.
Same boat.
Recommendation.
So there you go. Mr. Long, that'll be your partying, you know, farewell package.
I'm gonna miss that fair enough. I love hearing that. Fair enough.
All right, so um I got it. I'll 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 put something together and um. Um, I'll put something together. Don't worry. I I got it.
And I appreciate it. I just want to say for the record. This is what we're here for.
Yeah.
To plan a city. You know, these little things, the driveway, two feet, little setbacks, that's, you know, part of our day to day, but we're here to plan a city. Because if we're not here to plan a city, because that's not the intention that city council has or all these other people that we elect in this city based on popularity and not for skill sets and capacity, I get it. Now, what do I need to sit here and suffer through this for?
All right, I'll put that together. So basically, what your recommendation will say is that, you know, it's it's. It it'll say something to the effect that it is difficult for us as a planning board to make an assessment as to whether or not this is this property or these properties are needed for municipal purposes. Because we do not have a plan, because we need to have a broader comprehensive plan for the entire area to understand. Where we will have things such as things. Um. Things that uh minutes, uh a minute, that things for municipal uses such as parks and for parking and that kind of thing within the area. It'll say something to that effect.
I appreciate it. God bless us.
Got it. All right, thank you.
And in the beginning, perhaps, you know, if there were a need for municipal use, it would be towards open space. And the city council to. Enforce those open space provisions in the mount that already exist in the Mount Vernon West code. And then ended with, this is an increasingly difficult. Position the planning board is in to operate without a comprehensive plan. So at least they have. Somebody's putting it in their mind to start thinking about the open space and part of.
Well, how about we write it like this? How about we put a moratorium on any more development in this neighborhood? Or in Mount Vernon until we have in all these areas that we're that we're planning, the East Third Street Corridor, or is it West Third? Whatever it may be, uh Library Square, until we have a neighborhood plan, forget a comprehensive plan, right? You like, I don't think, we we just don't have the capacity to get there. So we have a neighborhood plan, let's put a moratorium on any more approvals. Period.
Well, I think that's a separate recommendation. If if that's what the board wants to do, I think that's a separate recommendation.
Okay.
I I do want to read uh board member. Did you, Jing, Jenga's um her comments. Uh, you can, yeah, we hear you guys speak.
Oh, you heard me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead and speak.
Oh, okay. No, I was just saying that I'm on the same page with Commissioners of Mark, because. It's like enough already, you know, and my recommendation also is to that. You know, I don't want to be a part of anything in. You know, I don't want to be a part of anything until I see, can't ask us to do that, you know. And for the city council to ask us to make a recommendation blindly, that's unfair. And I don't want to be a part of that either. So you count me out on that.
So fair enough. So I will put together the recommendation about. The use of this, uh, these parcels for municipal use, that's number one. And how does the board feel about the second request from, uh, board members of more about a moratorium? Does that, does the board send that recommendation to the council?
I, I agree with that, uh, with that approach or something where we can put a whole. Elements as, you know, everyone seemed to be on the same page, so we can get a plan put together. Uh, so we can have a micro, uh, macro overview. So when we have these micro projects, as long as it fits into the, into the plan. Then I think that will be the best approach.
Fair enough. Yes.
Well, I, I, I do think that we all, we, we do need to be somewhat, um, cognizant of, cognizant of the fact that. The city needs some money as well. So if there's development that makes sense. Um, and there's a developer that's coming with a, with a, with a good project. Um, I would hate for us to have a moratorium for someone who's going to be benefiting the city and the community. Um, and doing something positive for the city. So I would not necessarily, I would not be. In favor of a moratorium right now because I don't see. How. We're going to be able to get everything that we want done, you know. That quickly. And then if, if we're like talking about a moratorium. For a year, two years, three years, five years until we have a, a plan and. So I think that we just look at, you know, what's coming before us and things that are positive, you know, we need to, you know. You know, really look at them and make them the best possible, um. Developments that we can for the city and, and for the community at, at large. So. It's, it's.
My, my, my point of view was that we don't know what that is, commish. We, we don't know what the best possible is until we have a plan. So the moratorium does not need to be for a year or two. It, it's to give, to put pressure on everyone to come up with a damn plan.
Right.
So if we put some great projects out there that we really, really would like, well, let's get moving then. Let's come up with a plan. Because every time we say, oh, you know, let's just, there's a lot of great development out there, people are ready to do things, let's just do that, then we'll never have a plan. That doesn't give, that does not incentivize anybody to get a plan. That just incentivizes everyone to keep doing what the status quo, what we've been doing. If we want to change, we all have to do the hard work, okay? And say, okay, anything more, the buck stops here until we have a plan. And I'm not talking about playing the whole city. If Mount Vernon, right now is our, our priority, let's do that. Okay, let's put some.
I, I, I hear, I hear.
Put some money into it.
I hear, I hear you, Commissioner, but, you know. Yeah.
Saying it's not real and, and, and then that.
Literally.
It's not real in Mount Vernon.
Well, not, not, not just that, we, we don't have our planner. Mr. Wong will not be with us.
I understand, but there's things that we can do, you know.
Listen, I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I am with you a hundred percent.
No, I know you are.
And we can sit down and we can, and, and, and come up with as, as many, you know, positive ideas as, as possible. I'm with you. I'm with you.
Okay, so you know what? I'll tell you guys what. If everyone's gonna give up on this, let's just raise our hands round. Where's the white flag?
Not giving up.
Now, I'll take some white paper. I waved the white flag. Let's city council do whatever.
Leslie. Board member kind of agreed with you and you're getting upset for no reason. We're trying.
No, what I'm saying is that we have to do the hard work. If, if, we can't keep making the excuses. This, for nine years I've been here.
Everybody agrees with you and you're promoting this. We agree with you. We agree with you.
So, so we have a consensus?
We don't need the theatrics.
Well, you, you know, it's not theatrics, uh, commission, commissioner. Second proposal on the table here. Do you agree to the second proposal?
Repeat yourself.
You agree to the second proposal that's on the table, the second recommendation?
I am ready to hear what everybody wants to do to move this.
I, I understand, but you said that everyone's in agreement with my, with the second proposal, the, the second.
Leslie, stop and listen. Just like I listened to you.
I understand, but you're saying that everyone is.
So confused right now because you keep talking. So will you?
Alright, 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 alright. I've got my gavel and I'm knocking on it.
Okay, so let's take a vote. Let's go up and down. Let's give this over with. Let's move on to the next.
Alright, I, I, I think, Mr. Wong, what was your understanding of the recommendation that we were making to the council that, that? That you recall?
So. Putting the, putting the first recommendation about the fact that you, you know, you want to make sure that there's a comfort, a, uh, a plan for the area. About the municipal use of those properties. That one is clear. We're good with that. I think everyone has it. No problem. It's the, the, the consideration now is whether or not the planning board wants to make a second, a second. And separate recommendation to the city council. About whether or not a moratorium should be put in place, uh, on all development until there is at least a neighborhood plan. And this is based off what I got from. Board members of more, um, a neighborhood plan for the various areas within the city. And I'm not hearing any consensus. I, I think everybody, again, this is what I'm hearing. I think, again, everybody agrees with you, board members of more. I think that, um. I'm just, I just don't, I, again, this is me being your staff. I just don't know how I. And having worked with the city council, having worked with other boards. I don't know. Uh, let me ask you this. Let me put, let me give you the question. Board members of more. How do you suggest that we move development in this city? Knowing the fact that we don't have a comprehensive plan, but that we still need development to happen? How do you suggest that happen?
Oh, I suggest we, okay, I'll tell you how I suggest we have it. I suggest we put a hold, a temporary hold on any new development, okay? That will totally interfere with any type of, that we could possibly come up with because that landlord property would have already been. Used up for something that, that maybe, uh, would impede our use of the area right now as it, as it stands. Alright, and that we allocate, and let's, let's get creative in terms of where this money's gonna come from. And where the expertise is gonna come from. Maybe the developers fund it. Okay, so everyone who wants to develop in the area, great, you guys put towards a fund where we could now fund, uh, the plan for the neighborhood. Again, it all is about where focus, energy and desire will goes. If we have the focus, the energy and the will to do so, it will happen. If all we say is, I don't know how this can happen. I don't, well, we have projects and people just want to build, then you know.
Les, excuse me, Commissioners Zamor, you, you, you do realize that, that there is a fund. That developers are putting their money into and that's how we were having the professionals. You know, that were working for the city council, but. That money was not being, uh, how, how, how should I say, um.
Appropriated?
Or whatever, or what, right.
Distributed.
Distributed?
Right. So, so what you're saying right now absolutely is the way that it should be done. That's the way that it was being done. That's how we got. Um, Cleary and, and Zaren on board with the city council. But they're, but, but they have, but, but they're not being, I guess.
I understand. That's because that money is coming from a, whatever, so, so if you're, if, if what, if I understand what you're saying now. That money was given and is under the control of the controller, the controller's not paying them. That money for now on goes to, let's say, the IDA. And so the IDA pays them because that's a different fund and the controller doesn't have access to that. So. That's just me thinking off my feet. I don't even work for the city full time. So you don't tell me people who work for the city full time couldn't think about that?
Well, if I, if I may.
Were able to give it to the IDA.
Planning staff has, has thought of, planning staff along with corporation council. Along with the mayor's office, we have been brainstorming multiple, along with the city clerk's office. And the city council, we've been brainstorming multiple ways to try to be able to, uh, I hate to use the word workaround. But to continue the, uh, the planning process within the city. And the, the issue with using the, the IDA is that the IDA. Really can only get involved if it is a commercial piece of property. They can't get involved if it's residential. So now that's that side of it that's sort of halting. So again, we're trying to deal with this comprehensively. And all of the decision makers, um. In terms of the elected officials and so forth, you know, in, in terms of the city council. And the, uh, the mayor's office are really trying to figure out how to, how to make this work.
Well, you know what, William? If, 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 let's say the money came from the IDA to do the plan, the plan could talk about everywhere we want commercial or, or, and then where, wherever it's not. That is by default residential. I mean, we can figure it out, right? I'm sure there's a loophole. So figure it out. Everyone just figure it out. But we just can't keep building before figuring it out. So we can make excuses all day here as to why we can't get it done, or we can just get it done. Get it done. So is everyone on board with the second recommendation to put a mor-, uh, a moratorium on development in this, in any neighborhood that does not have a neighborhood plan?
Well, that, that's, that's, that's a little bit different because this has a plan, so you don't want to say that.
It doesn't have a plan. It has, it, it basically just, the only plan this has is, hey, you guys can build this type of, uh, building in this area.
Right, but what, what, what I'm saying is we, you have to, we have to be, you know, careful in terms of when you're talking about, what does that mean exactly?
Okay, Mr. Wong, what does that mean exactly? When I talk about, what does that mean exactly?
You don't, you don't want a loophole. Right?
I understand, but we don't have a plan now. A form-based, form-based zoning is not a plan.
Wow. Right now, you just, you're at an impasse. I guess, I guess, the question is, Mr. Chair, I, I guess, the, the thing. Uh, if I can make a suggestion to you, Mr. Chair, is to put the motion on the floor and see if there's a motion and see if there's a second. And the motion is, is just what you said, is there a moratorium?
We can do that or, or I, 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 I think Commissioners Zamor that if we. Could put our, 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 our thinking caps on a little bit more and have some more dialogue. We may be able to come up with something that may, may work in place of, of a moratorium. So I would like the. Need to explore that and figure out if there's a weapon and if not, then we go, then we go that route.
Sure. So you want to table this to the next meeting? I'm fine with that.
Can you repeat that again, Chair? It was coming in and out.
Right. So what, what I was saying is that I, I think that if, if we can, you know, put, you know, just. Think it through a little bit more, think of some, maybe some alternatives to a moratorium, try and figure out, you know, what can be done without having to do that. Um, I think it would, would be beneficial for us to at least, um. Think about it, have the discussion, try and, try and figure out the best way to move forward. And I would be more comfortable tabling it. And if we can't figure out a way, you know, before the next meeting. Then moving forward with the, the motion that Commissioners Zamor made.
Mr. Wong, I have to put too much, too much on your ta-, on your, on your plate right now as, as you're about to make your departure. But, uh, you may have at your disposal, uh, some, uh. Uh, examples, just like you sent us the, the kind, uh, videos and historical nature of the, uh, the, the, uh, train stations in Mount Vernon. Of some neighborhood plans or comprehensive plans, uh, that we can relate to, that you can send to all the land use, uh, members and show them what one looks like.
Well, I mean, you had one if you.
Trouble envisioning what one looks like.
I can tell you one off the top of, off the top of my head that, uh, that we did not too long ago, which was the South Fourth Avenue, um, um. I don't want to use the word redevelopment plan, but it was a name corridor plan. That's essentially a neighborhood plan for those two blocks of, uh, South Fourth Avenue between First and Third. So that, that's an example and that's on the city's website.
Okay. Alright, so maybe we should revisit that. Let's look at the best practices that, uh, we've already established there and see what we could incorporate in this area. And so if we're unable to get that done, why can't we get that one done for Mount Vernon West?
Funding. I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Money.
So it's money.
Money, all the taxes we pay. And we can't get that done. How much is that? What do you think? Yeah, ballpark, what do you think, Mr. Wong, is, uh, would it cost to, to get a neighborhood plan, uh, you know, for Mount Vernon West? Throw something out there. Hundred grand?
Hundred grand, you, you would have a very nice plan for a hundred grand, yes.
A very nice plan for a hundred grand, guys.
For the area, considering the zoning's already created and for the area.
Okay, so maybe we start a GoFundMe page, you know, I'll volunteer for that. I'll start a GoFundMe page. We have seventy thousand residents in, in Mount.
Okay, but now here's the thing, board members of more, this is the other thing. You get a, you, you get that money. It comes in and this is sort of the issue that we're dealing with and I, I hate to kind of air it out, but I'll put it out there. So this is the issue we deal with. You go to a GoFundMe page and people contribute. You reach whatever goal it is, a hundred thousand, a hundred twenty thousand, whatever the amount is. You then, because it's coming from the public and going, it's because it's coming from the outside the city. That money has to be dedicated and accepted by the city council. The city council passes a resolution and says, listen, we, thank you for the gift. We'll take this gift and we're gonna use, deposit it into an account. So we can use it for, to create a plan for whatever neighborhood you so desire, or that makes sense at the time, whatever it is. The city council, that money at that point. Makes its way to the controller and the controller doesn't accept the money. What are you doing?
The mute, mute, because I'm hearing screaming in the background.
Right.
I didn't hear anything you said, no.
I, I would, I would say what Commissioners Zamor said previously would be beneficial. In terms of, you're talking about the IDA and you're talking about commercial, you know, if we could, if we can plan the commercial aspect. You know, of the city, um. And have that paid for, you know. That would really kind of lend itself to letting us know residentially, you know. What we can develop.
You could almost.
It would make us a lot, it would make it a lot easier.
Well, I'm thinking about this as well. So, I mean, alright, boom. So the controller may not accept the, the funds. Could the money, the question then becomes, and it wouldn't go to the IDA necessarily because the IDA would focus on the business aspect of it. The question is, could the money go, could the money be accepted by the URA?
Okay, that was my next thing, right? Okay.
That's a question that arguably, I, again, this is my opinion. We'd have to do the research to fix, to make sure. Uh, from a legal standpoint, but it sounds, it sounds like it's reasonable.
Okay. Well, here we go. That wasn't too, too hard, was it?
Well, I mean.
And I'm not saying it's the answer, but this is how we come to an answer. When there's a will, there's a desire. But if we don't, and that's what the moratorium does. It forces us to get together to come up with an answer. Or else we're just gonna take the easy road out. I'm not looking for the easy road. I'm looking for.
Well, might I suggest that, um, Deputy Commissioner Melina? You still with us?
Yes.
Uh, might I suggest that, um, you take that suggestion. Of, uh, a GoFundMe and if the public were to, you know, contribute a certain amount, the public, the citizens of Mount Vernon created a GoFundMe. Would you pose that question to the, uh, chief of staff and to, uh, corporation council as to whether or not the URA could accept outside funds as a gift?
Um, so, you know, I, I've heard, and I think this is a very healthy debate. About moving the city forward in a manner that's structured. Um, and, you know, it's, you know, with resources, it's a matter of priorities. And, you know, um, uh, Commissioner Zamor, I, I, I hear your frustration. About the fact that, you know, this is, has been going on for, for many years. And, you know, as, 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 um. Planning administrator Long, uh, explained, you know, the city has attempted to do sort of like a piecemeal of different areas to try to. You know, bring together a comprehensive plan. Um, and, you know, what you're suggesting is, you know, thinking outside the box. Um, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't cost anything to explore the idea and, and we will do that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Fair enough. So unless there are any other concerns as it relates to this, uh, would you like to move on, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wong.
Alright.
And Commissioners Zamor will, 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 will speak and I'm gonna do some research and, uh. Put our heads together.
Thank you, thank you. I, 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 again, I, I didn't mean to go into all this, but I just couldn't sit here and have, and see this happening all over again. The only reason I sit in this chair and I give my time, I donate my time to this board for the past nine years or, and, or maybe more. Is to try to get maximum value for the residents of this great city. And that's, I spend my time on the school board trying to do the same thing and I'm here doing the same thing. And if we're not gonna spend our time. With the goal of getting maximum value for the residents in this town and for future residents who want to move here, then there's no need to be here.
Nope, that was, this was a very, very, very good and very healthy discourse and, uh, you know, this is, this is why we're here. We need, we need to, you know. you know, uh, look at things from different angles and, you know, figure out, you know, what is best for the residents of, of the city of Mount Vernon. Simple as that. All right, Mr. Long, let's move on to three point four.
Yeah, if you want to read the item into the record and, and, you know, I'm kind of glad we're talking about the Mount Vernon West area, because this
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, it seg- it segues pretty, pretty, pretty well into this. Um, three point four neighboring municipality development proposal process recommendation in accordance with section two thirty-nine NN one of New York State General City Law. It is the intent and purpose of this section to encourage the coordination of land use development and regulation among adjacent municipalities in order that each adjacent municipality may recognize the goals and objectives of neighboring municipalities and as a result, development occurs in a manner which is supportive of the goals and objectives of the general area. The Mount Vernon Planning Board is considering whether a development proposal in the city of Yonkers is aligned with Mount Vernon's long-range planning for the area considered the proposal is located along or near the city's border. Twelve nineteen Yonkers Avenue, the city of Yonkers, the applicant is proposing two hundred and sixty-six unit nineteen-story mixed-use structure with five floors to accommodate two hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces.
Yes. So, Mr. Chair, uh,
I'm confused.
Well, yeah, they're proposing, uh, five floors of parking in a nineteen-story structure, mixed-use structure. Um, so, Mr. Chair, um, since you like, like the agenda reads, um, by law, uh, the city of Yonkers is, um, has to send anything, any proposal within five hundred feet of the municipal water to the city of Mount Vernon for Mount Vernon's recommendation. With that being the case, uh, the city of Yonkers is holding a public hearing about this application on July fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so with that being the case, I just kind of want to give you some highlights. Um, this is the proposal, this is the location of the site. It's twelve nineteen Yonkers Avenue, this is all of the properties that were acquired. As you can see, this is the Mount Vernon West train station, this is, this line, this red line should actually be here at the city's border. This is where the city's border is between, that separates Mount Vernon to the east, Yonkers to the west. And you can see the proposed zoning of the newly created or recently created Mount Vernon West rezoning. Uh, this is twenty-two West Street, which is a proposal, actually is being, it's under construction for, uh, seventeen stories. Uh, the three properties that we were talking about, um, well, I shouldn't say three, but the properties we were just talking about as to whether or not they're needed for municipal purposes, I believe are one, two, three, four here. And I think this is the WDF parking lot, and then one, and then maybe two parcels here for the two, uh, the two proposals that we were just talking about that may be needed for municipal purposes. Uh, with that being the case, as you know, this is Mount Vernon Avenue and McQuestion Parkway here, which is the modern. Um, but again, this is what they're proposing. Uh, I want to go to, you see the zoning in Yonkers. This is the zoning, this is the zoning map. Um, let me go.
So is this the old theater?
Yes, the, the Kimball, the Kimball Theater, yes.
Okay.
Uh, if I can get to it without closing anything. Come on, come on. So this is So this is the proposed site. As you can see, it does not include the, um, they changed oil on the corner here, but it includes the parcels around it. Which again, includes the, uh, the Kimball Theater. Um, this is the development site. And you got to forgive me, because they wouldn't all go through in one email, so I had to, you know, open various emails in order to get to all of it. These, this is the, uh, if you can see this, this is the number of properties that are included. Uh, includes at least one, two, three, four, five, six, seven properties. So this is the survey. And if you give me a second, I want to I have the actual drawing itself. See if I can bring it up again. Uh, the proposed, what it'll look like, the rendering. And I, I wanted to email this to you, but I wasn't able to get this scanned until almost, uh, five thirty this afternoon.
Comment while you look for that.
Please.
If you take a look at our zoning of, uh, Mount Vernon West, uh, the color orange says non-commercial. And that's everywhere there. That's all it says, non-commercial. What does that even mean?
So non-commercial, so the intent was to have in, I'll go back to the zoning map in a second, and I'll, I'll address that. Uh, I'll address that in a second. I don't want to neglecting it, but I want to show you the rendering, since I have it up.
I'm curious, who's the developer? I didn't see it on the, uh,
I have the application. I, I believe I emailed the application to you, um, maybe right before the board meeting. This is the rendering. Probably not the best, but that's essentially the rendering. And if the board would like, I can send, it'll be page by page almost, uh, but I can send you, I, I only, uh, emailed the, uh, the most pertinent pages. I can email the board, um, all of, well, Deputy Commissioner Melina can email the board all of the, um, uh, the, the subsequent pages and everything that goes along with the proposal.
I don't see any.
I sent it right before the board meeting, but give me a second. Let me go back to the zoning. Boy, that's the thing, it's on your board, yeah.
Bradford Road, the updated agenda, amended PUCD park zoning ordinance, nothing else.
Got it from, um, it says scan, it says scanned image six twenty-eight.
No. Nope. Anybody else get it?
Checking now.
Hold on, let me go back. Said today. Board meeting, Yonkers, Yonkers on the map. Never mind, I'll bring it up. Give me a second, I got it here.
Okay.
Where is it? That's my thing. Why is this thing? Give me a second, let me stop sharing and let me, let me bring it up. Give me a second. I just, um, I scanned it before I left work, and I don't know, for whatever reason, it, it appears the scan did not. Hold on. Where is it? There it is, I got it. I have it. All right, give me a second. It didn't go through, for whatever reason, the scanned document. I emailed it to everyone, it didn't go through, that's what happened. But I scanned the document nonetheless. Uh, this is the, this is the only thing that scanned here is the application. That's why I, I don't know why the application didn't go through. Um, again, because it's not that many pages, but again, um, this is essentially what it is. The applicant, the owner is twelve nineteen Yonkers Avenue LLC, uh, in care of Titan Capital. This is the applicant consultant, this is the attorney, I guess. That's representing them in front of Yonkers. So that's what it is. I'll send this again. I don't know why it didn't go through, but I'll send this again to all of the board members after the, uh, after the meeting tonight. With that being the case, let me go back to the zoning map and address Mr. Zamor's question.
Well, Mr., Mr. Long, in terms of what, what we've been talking about with the Mount Vernon West plan and, and with the comprehensive plan, and at least on, on Mount Vernon West, you know, what had been approved was for, you know, mixed-use, you know, residential. Um, so in terms of them wanting to take advantage of the, the TOD in that immediate area, that's completely understandable. And I would think that would be some, you know, somewhat aligned with what it is that we're doing. It's not doing what Metro Green was looking to make it industrial. Um, you know, this is going to be a mixed-use, uh, you know, residential mixed-use development over, you know, to our, um, that our neighbor is looking to develop, so I think that it would be consistent with, uh, what would be developed, you know, in, in that, in that area.
Fair enough.
I second that, and they'll probably have, uh, restricted parking for Yonkers residents only, because they don't want Mount Vernon people there, because we can't figure out our own parking, so.
Well, just so you know what this, uh, as it relates to the zoning, again, this red line should actually go to the city of Mount Vernon, to the border. With this, uh, this, uh, brown Auburn type of color, what this represents is what's called the TOD hub, non-commercial. TOD hub is what it is. This is not TOD hub, non-commercial, this is TOD hub. And TOD hub means that it allows for the ti- it, it allows for the highest density and, uh, the greatest number of, um, the taller structures to be located here along McQuestion Parkway and Mount Vernon Avenue. As you begin to go, and again, the zoning map, this map does not, because I couldn't put it all in, it doesn't show what happens as you continue to go up, uh, as, continue along Mount Vernon Avenue. But you would notice that along Mount Vernon Avenue on the side streets, so what's that, North High, North Terrace? You would notice that it would say TOD hub and TOD, TOD hub, non-commercial, means that they have to follow, um, if someone bought the property and bought the property behind it, the front of the property would have to face on to the major street, which would be Mount Vernon Avenue and McQuestion Parkway. And they could have, like you said, for example, parking would be from the back, which would be from the side street. That's what the nun, that's what the TOD hub, non-commercial means, meaning that the commercial enterprise, because they, it allows for mixed-use structures, the commercial would have to be on the major street, and they couldn't put it on the backstreet. And without that clarity, that's what would happen. Somebody could come along and say, you know what, I don't want to, instead of facing the building along McQuestion Parkway and having the commercial aspect along McQuestion Parkway or Mount Vernon Avenue, a person would have their back to Mount Vernon Avenue and McQuestion Parkway and have the, um, uh, the commercial aspect on North Ha- North Terrace or North High. So that's what that is.
Wow, I, I'm impressed. That, I mean, that's, that's some deep thinking. I mean, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, here I am thinking and, uh, someone actually, you know, really thought about, you know, the backside of a building facing the main road, which ninety-nine percent of the time never happens. And parks that do happen are not even considered here. I don't see one green mark here. I'm just giving you an example of a park. There's many other things that I think that would benefit the public here, that would provide great circulation that we're not even thinking about. But again, this just goes to show you, uh, you know, what's important to this town. Uh, you know, eh, the other thing I want to make about, I want to say about Yonkers is that, don't be surprised if they, if they make it Yonkers residents only, because you see Mount Vernon. If we can't do for ourselves, no one else will do for us. Okay, now that, I, I talk about Mount Vernon when it comes to that, and everything else, all this social justice movement you're talking about that's going on right now. If we can't as a people do for ourselves, don't expect anyone else to do for us. So same thing here with this city. So we could go on and just BS our way through this and get exactly what we want. And in the meanwhile, you know, we'll keep spending dollars elsewhere. You know, they talk about the money turning in Jewish communities fifteen times before it leaves the community, Italian communities twelve times, Hispanic communities nine times, in black communities once or twice, and the reason is, we have nothing here to spend it on. And we keep doing things, and we keep so-called planning, if that's what you want to call it, to dig our graves and get exactly that. And there will not be anything to spend our money on here. That's exactly what we're going to continue to get if we don't plan. So, yes, money doesn't stay in black communities, because there's nothing to spend, and you know, I'm sorry, I don't shop dollar stores and, and, and and I don't get my nails done, or get my hair done, because that's all we have going on here. If we want to continue that, just continue on. And if we want to have a good time and a nice time, we'll go to, yeah, we'll go to Yonkers River Frog, you know, we'll go to Starsdale, we'll go to the Marinerne, we'll go on the water in New Rochelle. So we do, so we continue to do. Any political function, things going on, yeah, let's go to the waterfront clubs here and there. Nothing in Mount Vernon. And we will continue that way until we just dig on. I bought a house here fifteen years ago for seven hundred and ten thousand. I put over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into my house here. And you know what? I'm, I, I just, uh, uh, did a copy the other day, six fifty. I put over three hundred thousand dollars in fifteen years, and fifteen years later, it's worth, it's worth less than what I paid for fifteen years ago. This is the only town in Westchester this happens. You name me, any one of you can, another town in Westchester where the value purchase of your house from fifteen years ago actually has gotten down, and I'm talking about one of the best neighborhoods in Mount Vernon. Go figure. I'm not surprised.
All right, did we lose everyone?
No, we're here.
All right, let's, 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 let's get back on track with this, uh, twelve nineteen, uh, Yonkers Avenue. And in terms of our recommendation. All right. Does anybody, uh, think differently in terms of?
Mr. Chair, can I, uh, I mean, our recommendation, does it hold any weight anyway?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, you made recommendations with the, with Metro Green, didn't you?
That's what, that's, that's why I'm letting you know.
Okay. That's why I asked.
I, I, I appreciate it. So, so, at the end of the day, I, I just, you know, I, 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 I don't, I think that it would be considered to be aligned with, with the with, uh, although we don't actually have a long-range plan, if we were to have a long-range plan, that, uh, it would, uh, it would make sense, because we are talking about development by the, uh, by the Metro North Station.
Fair enough. So question for the board, i- in, the question is, i- if everyone feels the same, if there's some consensus, does the board want to send comments? You don't have to send comments if you do not, if you don't desire to do so. It's up to the board.
I don't, I, I don't, I don't see a need for us to send comments on this.
I don't see a need to send comments either. All right. Council, would they need to vote on that, or?
There's no harm in voting. Well, noted for the record, along with the, uh, discussion.
Okay, I make a motion that, uh, that we, that we do not send comments over to Yonkers on this particular, development. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody else? All right, you got Frank? Shamel?
Aye.
All right, all right. There we go. That was unanimous.
Fair enough. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, there's one other item that I'd, I'd like to discuss with the board. Um, and, and I want to bring this, this point out, considering the fact that, uh, you know, Um, and I want to bring this, this point out considering the fact that, uh, you know, planning staff is, is leaving, or at least myself. I'm thinking, um, there are, at, at a minimum, five subdivision applications that are in the works, be the behind the scenes and or on its way, you know, uh, in the, in the immediate future that will make their way to the planning board. One is an hazard right situation. Uh, two of them will require area variances from the zoning board before they can come to the planning board to seek a subdivision. And two applications are illegal subdivisions. Um, illegal subdivisions, just more for clarity, is a situation where I own a piece of property and I go file, I hate to say this, because this is, but this is what happens, unfortunately, what happens is that a person can go to Westchester County and, and file a deed and the deed, and the county will, the county clerk's office will accept it. Um, absent checking with the municipality to make sure that the subdivision actually happened within the, uh, the, the rules or regulations of the municipality. With that being the case, two of them are illegal subdivisions, which the people, uh, the person A sold part of their lot to person B, person B now owns the lot and is trying to build. With that being the case, you have two of those situations that will be coming before your board at some point in the immediate future. And, um, having a conver, having had a conversation with the land use, uh, the land use review board subcommittee, which consisted of, uh, planning board chairman, two members of the zoning board, um, and, um, the, uh, two members of the A R V and two members of the city council, which are essentially the city council's planning and finance subcommittee. What they suggested was that if you, if the planning board were to approve any subdivisions, that you put in conditions that the applicant must contribute whatever amount it is, and that's what I wanted to talk to you about, an amount so that the city could create subdivision rules and regulations. And I want to bring that to your attention so that you can begin to contemplate how much you should charge each applicant in order to be able to create such, uh, rules and regulations. If, if the board decides to approve those type of applications. So. So I just want to open that up to discussion, is there any, any questions, comments, anything like that?
Okay, so where is that money going to go?
The money will go into an escrow fund, it's, well, let me say this, it's supposed to go into an escrow fund. And, uh, supposed to sit there.
Didn't we, didn't we, didn't we have this conversation like an hour ago?
I tell you.
I wouldn't even consider that at this point.
Well, I'm just letting you know what's coming and I'm just letting you know what, what the thought is.
One percent. So, one percent of the, of the projected cost of the project.
It's a thought, it's something that you will have to consider.
Right, but that, that's, uh, that's reasonable. That's reasonable, alright. So, uh, alright, that's a starting point, let's, uh, let's figure, let's figure it out.
I mean, a- and again, I, I bring it as food for thought for tonight, I don't think that you, I don't know that the board is in a position to, you know, uh, to come to a determination tonight, that's up to the board, but again, you don't have to come to a determination tonight if you don't, if you don't choose.
Well, what we do have to figure out and, and, and we're not going to do it tonight is, is because we do have to figure out the mechanism for, 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 uh, for the escrow and in terms of payment and in terms of getting the, getting it to, um, the, the proper hands to, uh, assist with the subdivision, uh.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
It's called the next election.
Whoa.
Oh, Wesley.
No, 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 listen. It's, it, it's, it is an idea and that's something that, you know, has to, uh, be considered. It always has to be considered and, and you know, your vote does, does matter. So, there's nothing wrong with, uh, with him putting it out there, because at the end of the day, if for whatever reason, things aren't, aren't getting done and if we have to do workarounds and, and what have you, then, you know. Listen.
Only happening government, it never happened in a corporation, never. Efficient the way government operate. Well, at least in democracies, dictatorships are very efficient.
Alright. Alright, besides the, the, the subdivisions, you got anything else there, William?
That's all, Mr. Chair, that concludes all, all business.
Alright, well, Mr. Mr. Long, I, I, I would like to take the time to, to again, thank you for your eleven and a half years of service to the city of Mount Vernon, um, for your tireless work, working in the evenings, working on the weekends, um, going above and beyond, um, what really, uh, just going above and beyond, I mean, because you, you really did, and you've, you've, you've helped me personally. You've helped the, uh, the, the board, um, you've helped the city, you've helped all the land use board, the city council to really understand their roles, um, in making, uh, decisions, uh, on, on behalf of the residents. And I think that was certainly demonstrated today because you know, we don't all agree on everything. Um, but we're respectful, we're professional and ultimately, we're going to do what's best for the city and we're going to come to a decision, you know, and, uh, you know, it's not something that goes without a, a lot of effort, so, um, you know, and, and, and thank you, you know, for, you know, really hanging in there with us and, and, and helping us and guiding us. Um, you know, uh, it, it has meant a lot to me personally and professionally, and I just feel like we're going to miss you. And, uh.
Thank you.
You know, wish you the best, William, um, you deserve it and I know that you're going to thrive in your new, in your new role.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, I, I really do, and, um, you know, again, it's been a pleasure working with all of you and I've, I've learned a lot, you know, uh, from all of you individually and developed personal relationships with all of you, uh, you know, even the new board members that just came on, it's like I've known you all for years, you know? And, um, you know, it's, 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 it's been my pleasure to serve the city. It's been my pleasure to serve with you all as board members and as a board, and it's been my pleasure to serve the public. Um, and to help the public really understand, um, you know, the, the importance and the impacts of making uh, the most informed, uh, decisions as it, as it relates to planning and land use. So, again, thank you, thank you very much.
Fair enough.
Leslie Zamora for Planning Commissioner.
I, I, I do not deserve an underpaid job, thank you.
Oh, come on.
That's even if I get a paycheck.
So.
If I could even get one, if they would even issue one.
Yeah, I just want to say for, again, for the record that from here in, uh, Mr. Malina, uh, Deputy Commissioner for the Planning Department until for the, at least for the interim, uh, will be, uh, you know, managing and administering the, um, the boards.
Okay, and when's your official last day tomorrow?
Uh, my official last day is July tenth.
Okay.
Um, today was actually with my actual last day being in the office and I start the new position, uh, July thirteenth, so.
Alright, excellent. Congratulations, Mr. Long.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, let me make a motion to adjourn.
Mo, there is a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Bittersweet, Mr. Long, bittersweet.
Take care, William, we'll be speaking.
Good night, well.
Alright.
Talk to you later.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.